All right, it is 6:02 and I will bring this meeting or this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council for June 6, 2024 to order. Before we all stand for the flag salute, I would ask everyone for a brief moment of silence here in remembrance of the fact that today is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. All right, with that, if everyone would stand for the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And council members, just before we start tonight, a reminder to talk into your microphones.
We can't hear your mic.
Can't hear my mic? Okay, but it is on. Okay, so roll call, Councilmember Lou Casey?
Here.
Councilmember Brian?
Present.
Councilmember Deusch?
Present.
Councilmember Kessler?
Here.
Mayor Xereno?
Here. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number three, special presentations and announcements, of which we have none, so we'll move directly into item number four, public comment. This is a time for members of the public to make a general comment on any items that are on the consent agenda or not on the agenda this evening. If you do have comments relating to a specific item that is on item number 10, old business, or item number 11, new business, I do ask that you save your public comment for that time. Everyone will have three minutes to speak and I will give a 30-second warning. When your time is almost up, please state your name and address for the record. We'll do people in public first and then move on to Zoom. When you do get to Zoom, if you can signify that you'd like to speak by raising your hand, that would be perfect. And with that, I will open up the public comment for this evening. Anyone who'd like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Hello, if there's any work to do, I'm just gonna calm down. Maybe to expect all the white issue, that's what I'm saying. I'm gonna leave this as a special message. It's kind of... That's usually what we need to have speed. On February 1st, 2024, $1,000, I'm going to school, hungry, the reading, no safety, we were 1,000, two hundred from my driveway. It was 17, 2023, I would read the letter from the end of the state, my vehicle wasn't used, but who said? About any form of communication about this, except write a letter, respond, or share. So much I did, and never heard, never ever. So, I took it, 2023, sent a letter demanding $100 for having my name laid on up. The state issued a joke, this was on my car, we didn't see it, so I called, I'm concerned, I'll find it, which I did, again, never heard it, never heard it, never. Yet on January 30th, 2024, I found my friend's door, my basement one. And I'm the only one that I know of so far that's out with me, so far, my part is short, my part is not a distraction. He doesn't do his job to date, through May of 2023, has never taken a report of the neighbors' 8 pound unleashed of attack on my East 18 dump. And I called him back after the fight, he says, "Call me seven in the morning, I called, I called, I called, I'm supposed to see him, why doesn't he call?" I mean, man is new, the man doesn't want to be the one. I have followed the procedure to man's agenda, should have something to add to things that happened. And that would be, probably this part, that you still can't stand why you can't be there, say, "Oh, no," or some, "Something, something professional," and it's not enough. I'm not as hard as they told me, asking this, I'm not, not a year, every week, it's like so much. I'm very disappointed in that non-professional treatment to be on media. I've been told by all the news that, you know, they told me that you have to take action for what it's being talked about, I think because they're afraid, for some reason, and I'm like, "But yeah." You need to take proper legal action against them, which that I don't speak for about 20 other people in town. And today...
30 seconds.
...a mean old one that has an engagement order to destroy my car. And I try to so just plead it, hold judgment, everything, million bills were comes from, answer was, get an attorney. So, I'm just waiting for this professional and some truth. So, I can say, man needs to be fired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor. I was having a talk with Lee. He pointed out some things to me, so I'm gonna drive. Being many years ago, I got to learn a lesson. They were passing, me and Mr. R, passing, much needed, much, much needed water super increases for the city of Dunn. Yeah, they were all needed, yeah, it was important, yeah, the state wanted us to do it. And we did it as a council. Between that and marijuana, deeper recall. It's really funny, cause a short day after that, all the people that recalled me ended up eventually being allies in the quest to help bring the town to its senses. So, I've always expected the fact that where I might have been, right? The real truth of the matter is, it's about communication and we are representatives.
You have to talk to the mayor, whatever he wants to do.
We'll give you an extra.
All right, so whatever. We represent the citizens. I started this speech, looking over the protocols, I get into the second or third paragraph, and there's this thing, "I'm public speaking." And it stated that counselors should pay attention and listen in public speaking. This is probably the second time I had to go through this. All I want to say is, we do represent, you do represent us. You don't represent the state, you don't represent the city staff, you represent us. We're eventually your bosses and decide where things go. What we're asking for is a lot better communication. And we're asking for a lot better city management. There's a huge discrepancy. I've talked to several business owners that have never met Mr. Reeve. When I first came to meet Mr. Reeve, we went through a terrible start. I called and called and called, finally got a meeting, cleaned the air with him, try and get on some even keel. Never got that handout, so I can definitely say what everyone else is saying. He just has a one-way mind about things, and it's very difficult on the city. We have no issue with building codes, we have a issue with how things are handled. And if a lesson could be learned, it would be, if you're gonna be on council, you have to communicate, you have to go out, meet with the people, meet with the business owners, because that's how things get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my turn. I came here, I'm not complaining, I don't want anybody fired, I don't want anything, I just want... You guys complained last week, something about, "We don't have serve up anymore, we need the money." But all this business, look at the town, it's sad, it's pathetic, shut down everything. Think about, wait attack, come back. You know, I came here 25 years ago, he would write, the city manager came down, shake hand me, come down, talk to me, what you need to be doing, he told me I do it. But exactly, you know, just like he said, "You guys serve up, they got reward for you." But you guys, it's really, really difficult to work. My husband called four, five times, I'm not lying, my husband. I was go right into office, send me the wrong office. I feel sorry for that kid over there. He came from Newport, he buy the building, he tried very hard. Think about, you know how much a month he pay? I been there, I been threatened by the bank, I been threatened by the loaner. If you don't have money, that you bankruptcy. You really want that young people who got bankruptcy, destroy him, destroy all that four, five people gonna have a job, now they have to move to Mount Shasta. Think about that. You become, you, you guys got the, I don't know you guys even pay, but the city manager got paid. Think about, come out, I'm all bloody with tax, tax. You know, every time I pay my tax, I want the people who work for the city to do their job. I don't, I don't complain, I don't know, nothing, what happened, but I do heartbroken to see business destroyed, business have to run away, business have to be suffering. If without business, you know, just like if you go to the war, right, the leader is suck, the whole army will die. But the leader strong, the whole army will be one. That's all I wanna say. I'm gonna come every time meeting until I want the answer, what you guys gonna do with that young man over there? Or just say, because I'm not gonna inspect your building, I'm not gonna let you work. You think about how much a month the bank taught him. Think, you know, every time you got the paycheck, think about these people.
30 seconds.
Okay.
Do us 30 more seconds if you'd like it.
The reason I came to that thing, I don't care.
Ah, Peter R. 5859 Sacramento Avenue. Headline for tonight's meeting to be that I may be developing a role management for Mario.
It would be welcome.
And I say that because like the Bible and the officials, I'm addressing what's Mario and Isaiah, which is one of several other dedicated citizens. To do what we honestly thought was the right thing, even though at the time, the community not support, paying higher utility rates for infrastructure, the poor. They didn't support the idea of being kind of marijuana, our community, that's recreational marijuana. And the community let us know how they go about it, they recalled that the city council, and they got what they got in the act. Which was at least 10 years ago, we absolutely know their lawsuit charging, they have violations of Brown Act, but all these pictures. Or ended up pleading, and committed this turmoil of federal statutes. So, I hope they close my school even for your service. I know that we're into, we're headed toward to fly, in a new physical. And as Mario and I had helped behind this, trying to move that sphere into an efficient, old, from an inefficient old voice system into a more special government structure. If our city can chance to thrive and grow. Especially Councilmember Casey, especially you, from here, Brian. We came up with, by accident. We came up to your budget. We came up, mostly thanks to initiative that Julie got out of the community, of the serving. If ever reached permission, that asked all the right questions about the vibrant business community, that's the best dent.
30 seconds.
Shortly, we came up with a two-year budget, 21, 23, working closely with the city manager to identify priorities, plans, funding. And so, we're not all sitting there saying, "Great idea, KF organization, great idea of a PKF organization." Seriously, to get back to what was to your budget, you have a couple listings, citizens, you have to...
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else in person this evening? Anyone on Zoom this evening? If you do have a comment, please signify by raising your hand. Go down to the reactions tab. Seeing no one, I will close public comment for this evening.
This is Mr. Mayor, I think.
Who are you?
Sorry, my name is Mark Wores.
There we go.
I felt injured by the meeting last week and the meeting before. Yeah, we are moving towards a positive direction. I, there's a challenge for all of this, for a lot of this, this community and citizens staff to, there are, like... And you're working to change the community.
One second here. I'm just gonna pause your, pause the time for a second. If everyone could just make sure their phones are on silent, please. Right. And I'll reset your time.
I, which I haven't, I, as I said, I was very fortunate that Hidal Dunsmere had three major fire incidents. Built in 1858, nineteen forty, burned down most of the town within, 1948, second, was the second tire. At that time, it would be referenced to D-Day. Because of D-Day, because of the bomb, it was thought that they were to create the link that was black box. That was built with cement, surplus cement from ready down, it proved itself in fire, it's happened, except for the few interior walls. But it's been lost for a long time, because the repairs that were required, it's more than 23 times. I think all of us here, when I'm working together, like so we're just, thank you for, for taking a step. Thank you, Mr. R. I, you know, we have our differences, but I think we have to ensure each other, and, and really attractive right there.
Oh, my God, he giving a tear in my eye.
Well, congratulations, Mr. R. Shit, I just couldn't hear your comments. So, thank you. What it does is, if we work together, I, essentially, sure we can tell.
Thank you.
French Jones, my head phone, pass it, also on Shasta, it's a street to street lot. I've been targeted a few times, bar hour, quarter, and I'm just... Even the fact during COVID, the state of California, Sacramento called up here. And said, "Yes, she does have insurance, why didn't you tow her car? And why didn't you charge her $165? And then I had to go to weed to get my car out, but it was outside for some reason, and it gave them $100." I still have ultimate money, they told me that there's no timeframe. I looked for my receipts, where the $165 and the $200, and I diligently paid Dunsmere. And I expect them diligently to pay me back. I also, for those that are, that have problems with code enforcement. I have just told people to just go to small claims court, get them to small claims court. For $5,000, $10,000, $25, whatever, get rid of the rules. But this is a way for Dunsmere citizens to, can, have people come up with code enforcement, like they have in railroaders. I'm gonna give them a small claims form, along with a, offer those, if they make less than $4,500 a month, which a lot of us do. We make less than that. And that way, you guys can deal with small claims on this code enforcement. Meanwhile, stuff. I just want the citizens of Dunsmere to be able to do that, and to bark back when they feel wronged. So, I'll be passing these out to anyone that wants them, to be able to go to the court. I guess so, code enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, if you have a problem, I have a thought, and you could just ask and, and pay a dollar for it.
Thank you, Sherri.
I've reached out to the city manager, the police director, actually, about, I'm concerned about other firms that employees are using it. I've seen a fire going home, trucks, city guys are cutting off during the same time. And I think that should be indicated that a fire would take it home. Probably, that's what they trust, told me that he didn't know what to do about it, so. Another thing is, is Mr. Reeve, I believe, lacks communications skill, likes to hide in his office, hiding other people. When you reach out to him, he always puts somebody else in front of him, and I think that's a great way to handle people. I think that if he was better at communicating downtown, through a lot of this process, maybe have this practice with businesses. Getting back to the, to the, to the roots of being part of the public. Feels like he wants to hide out, doesn't wanna take, take ownership of the public. Hopefully can work on that. It sounds like a lot of challenges that we're going forward. Financially, it sounds like we're gonna have a big rate increase within that, or a solid waste. I think that we can't use rate increases to fix that mistake, and fix mistakes we made, managing our own business. I hope you guys are looking at that as part of your process. I know as a homeowner, I don't wanna keep paying for rate increases every time, because it's managed.
Thank you. Right, and I did see that we had a hand raised on Zoom.
Screen keeps moving around, though. There we go.
David, if you did have, I saw your hand raised, if you do have a comment, if you could raise it again, yep.
For clarity's sake, the comment about small claims court. Small claims courts cannot order people to do anything, can't order the city to do anything. It can only award a monetary judgment. And it isn't $10,000 for everything. There's about four or five different limits, starting around $2,500 up to $10,000, just so you know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Was that clear? Could you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. All right, anyone else this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment for this evening. And with that, we'll move on to item number five, council and staff comments, since we don't have the sheriff's department here, so you manage a reef, if you'd like to lead us off.
This week, I met with Cosmont over Zoom to discuss the town hall, to, to look at all of the, the strategic... The strategic initiatives and then also the task associated with those. And we came up with the date of July 24th at 5:00 PM at the community center. So, that doesn't work.
How does that fit in with today's action item, or today's item they're dealing with?
So, so today's item, since it's on consent, I'll chat about it a little bit. Today's item is, in order for us to comply with the grant, then we have to, we had to adopt by resolution. So, it's just kind of a follow-up. We did adopt it, but it was not by resolution, so Blake had caught that when he was reviewing that.
Sure.
So, that's why that's back on there.
Okay.
But this is, this is kind of what Councilmember Brian was asking about, and, and so we're gonna move, move forward with the town hall on the 24th of July at 5:00 PM. And we'll be, notices will go out, should be going out in the utility bills at the end of the month.
Follow-up question on that, if I could.
Yeah, they're, they're working on a flyer, and, and so I hopefully will have that by early next week. But it's, there's five strategies and like eight, eight tasks, I think they call them, or whatever, so those will be the primary. There's going to be a survey that's coming out as well, and so that survey will be linked in, or the link will be in the utility bill, so people can have it in advance. And then it'll remain open for a couple of weeks after the, after the meeting itself.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes. Public Works primarily preparing for Railroad Days, that starts tomorrow. Met with and discussed conducting, planning RFP interviews, which we'll be conducting next week. Staff met to discuss and kind of a communication outreach process over the last couple of weeks, it's been identified that we need to try and do a, approach it differently. And so, we've, we've met as a group, and we're gonna develop some easier formats to provide and a little more of a, sometimes a, some type of flow chart. So, people understand what we're doing and, and at what stage they're at, and as well as some other additional communications. So, we'll be trying to push that out here in the next couple of months. And then also, I, I was appointed to the NorCal Continuum of Care Board yesterday, which is basically Shasta, Siskiyou, and I think Trinity County. And their focus is primarily on homeless resources for Siskiyou County, and so there was no representation in South County. And so, there's, I don't know, there's a large number of participants and a lot of resources, but it's not, it's not something I was aware of that we all had. So, we're working on that, and we'll, we'll have, the county is gonna come along with their outreach person and do a ride along with the sheriff and myself to kind of do some outreach here locally.
Right, Councilmember Lou Casey?
I just have two items, just finishing up an active transportation grant, so going back to you, I understand people get frustrated that we're not doing anything, and we do a lot of planning. But we did finish up an active transportation plan, which now makes us eligible for a significant amount of funding for sidewalks, biking, safe routes to school. So, applying to that grant cycle right now for a number of larger projects, there's about $125 million in that pot. And it did not get cut during the budget cuts for the state, which is great. And the only other thing is Happy Pride Month for those who celebrate that. I hope everybody stays safe, because it's always a chief concern. Other than that, this is the third meeting.
Question for you, I don't know. I was getting asked about the latest, what's going on with Mossburg, do you have an update on Mossburg, or Dustin, do you have one?
So, we don't have a, so one of the things that we've been looking at, that we haven't been able to spend time on, just because there's other priorities of the city that are a little bit more pressing. We are working on talking to Pace Engineering, which is our city engineer, to look at the cost to finalize the engineering of the pedestrian bridge. We do have most of the plans for the separate trail done, but we do need to have that pre-engineering completed before we move through the CEQA process, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, which is environmental, which we're hoping to claim.
which is the California Environmental Quality Act, which is environmental, which we're hoping to claim an exemption through the county, which I have a soft kind of approval from them to do that. But they won't obviously do that till we get the planning documents completed. The hope is to then approach funders, either the Trails Association or the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, which we are now part of, to pay for the finalization for the engineering for all of that and then go to construction. But we do have soft approvals from Union Pacific to to do that trail. Unfortunately, they will not push us through to the real estate department until we've completed the entitlements, which is the pre-engineering and the environmental.
I figured it was aligned well and that's all.
Yeah.
It's it's slow.
And also, we we did establish, I believe we came to council to establish a fund at
Yeah.
the
We have a donation fund now that goes.
Trying to figure what it's called. North State Foundation.
Yeah.
And so
Until we're able to get staff resources to work on this project or we get an exorbitant amount of money to hire additional staff to work on this process. You know, we don't have an ideal timeframe. Again, we have a limited amount of office staff to work on this. And I'm a volunteer for the most part for this position. So it's going as fast as we have free time to do it. Again, if this is a priority of the council, that's maybe something we need to agendize and talk about. You know, we always go back and forth between looking at what are the projects that we have on the docket that staff is working on and we have to choose what the priority is, right? And so we've just decided this is something that we work on when we get time available to do so. If we do want to have a more concerted effort, we should probably agendize that and look at the priorities of staff to be able to set aside time for it. Unfortunately, when you get large projects such as these that that transcend a number of different federal, state, private agencies, it's not going to go quickly. And it's it's something that has to be approached at a pretty sensitive way because you have so many players. And one poor comment can make the whole project go sideways. And so we've been trudging along. I know it's not super attractive and it's not like the answer that people want. But we've, we've got good traction. We have a good engineering firm. And the the contact engineer with Union Pacific has been super supportive of the project, which is something that we haven't had historically. So we're riding that good nature and moving forward with the project as quickly as we can.
But it's in limbo until we get some resources.
Yeah, so we're we're working on it as we can get to it until, yeah, we we assign more staff time or or more resources to it.
Thank you.
I don't have any other updates.
Councilmember Kastner?
The roadies having breakfast Saturday morning at the Catholic Church. I'll proceed, go back, back over my day. Go out, support the roadies, breakfast, have breakfast.
Hold on. There there was a change to the time, the flyer that's out there and everything that's out there says seven thirty to ten thirty. That is wrong. It's eight thirty to ten thirty. We're trying to make as best effort as we can to get the word out. But if you want pancakes, it's eight thirty to ten thirty, not seven thirty to ten thirty.
What he said. Just everybody come out for Railroad Days. Have a good time. Support the people that come. That's all I got. I I I will be making a motion later on this evening that maybe we should maybe put this Mossbury on the agenda because I think this is something that could just change the face of everything. This is, this is make or break you. And this is something that people get there safely. That was what it was all about.
Thank you, Councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you. The only thing I want to point out is, is that, starting last year, working with Cheryl Petty, who was the executive director at the time of the chamber, we started looking at a way to put all of our restaurants, all the menus, all of our businesses, everything online in a way that could be shared through any different website. Particularly, the goal at that time was to come up with a way so that when a visitor came to the city that they could not just find out what the restaurants are, but what restaurants were open at that moment. Because that's one of the big concerns with all the changing of hours. Well, that kind of went on hold for a year, but now it came back alive. And I just got done a week or so ago, meeting with Heather at Cipollone at the Economic Development Council. And she's discovered Siskiyou. And my word from her is, is that it is something that they feel, I haven't got the the final affirmative. But her feeling was this is something that she definitely wants to do, which would mean that for the entire county, we would have one place where a visitor, once they come to us and visit us, could be able to connect with all the events, all the itineraries, all the tours, all the restaurants, all the businesses. And this would all be done with the the pay from Discover Siskiyou. So it would be a benefit for us without a penny coming out of it. And obviously, this also will tie into our agenda idolater, later, agenda item later on about the landing page for our hotspots because that would fit right in with that. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm recovering from an illness and it's difficult to speak without coffee. And so I'm gonna forego comments this evening.
Thank you. And I'm going to keep mine short just because we have a fairly long agenda. I just want to preach safety for a second. First off, fire safety. We all know how hot it was out there today. Everyone just be careful. Secondly, the river is a little higher than normal for how hot it is out there. So anyone who's going down there fishing or any kids, you know, who are going down to the river is a kid who spent a lot of time in that river. It's pretty dangerous right now. So just to make sure you're spreading that around the community to be safer on the river. And lastly, just enjoy Railroad Days. All right. With that, we will move on to committee reports, of which I don't believe we had any committee since last week. All right.
Finance Committee on this coming Monday.
Yeah. All right. And then we'll move on to approval of the minutes of May 23rd.
Before, before we make a motion, I'd like to friendly amend the minutes on page seven of the agenda, page five of the minutes. Lukey recuses herself from item C and D. I only recuse myself from item C. I did not return for item D, so I should be listed as absent for item D.
You were there for D.
I was not. No, this was the one before. This is what happens when you have so many meetings. But yeah, it's just a friendly amendment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to review the minute as.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. All right, well, that will move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda today. Request for consolidation of municipal election, accepting downtown revitalization strategy, and check register.
Make a motion to adopt consent agenda.
Second.
I have a brief question on it. With the Cosmo adoption, I understand you need a resolution for it. I just wanted to follow up. We were supposed to make a couple clerical corrections on the plan.
Okay.
When we passed it, remember there was like some obvious errors?
Go back and look at my notes.
Could we make sure those are addressed?
Yes.
I hate to have it be sitting there. Anthony reads it, the state has the wrong information. Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Well, that will move on to item number nine, public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is Community Development Block Grant Discussion of Possible Applications for Funding and to gather residents' ideas for possible activities for inclusion. City Manager Reeve.
All right, Mayor and Council, we, before you tonight, we have our Community Development Block Grant. We're working with Great Northern Services and with Brandy, who is also here. And so we have tried to work through a couple of different options on how we can utilize it best for for the city. One of the, a couple of the areas where we we have have challenges, one is housing, the other one is storm drains. And so those are eligible actions and as well as working through some code enforcement associated with the housing challenges. And so that's the kind of the direction we're proposing to go through to to get funding in this next round of CDBG. So Brandy, if you have anything else.
If you could come up to the mic if you do make this comment. Thank you.
Push and hold.
There you go. There we go. So my name is Brandy Caparasso. I'm the Community Development Manager with Great Northern Services. So I'm gonna, there's some things I have to read in for the public hearing as required by the Housing Community Development Agency. That's the state agency that distributes the funds. So the city of Dunsmere anticipates submitting an application during the twenty, this is the 2024 CDBG program year that they're going to be submitting for. And the city anticipates having about a hundred thousand dollars of CDBG program income. So program income is from housing rehab or economic development loans that have been lent out. And then those are the repayments plus the interest. So there's about a hundred thousand dollars in that. It has to be re-spent into the CDBG program or that are disencumbered back to the state. So the purpose of the meeting and the public hearing is to get the residents' views on either economic development, housing or community development needs, public services, facilities or infrastructure projects that that possibly we could apply for. There's about thirty million dollars in the state for this. Another thing that has to be done is the amount of funds that are available in the range of projects that are proposed. And then the information about those projects. And the estimated amount of funds proposed used for activities for benefit low and moderate income individuals. That's what this, the national objective for this program is to assist low and income, low and moderate income residents. Be any displacement, so we don't have to worry about that. And then any questions about past funds and past uses of CDBG funds? So if anybody has any questions about that.
I do. The question I have is, I understand the idea we get, as the city get given a certain amount of money. And then as the money comes to get paid back, we have to go and put it out. Where are we in the cycle right now? Are we dealing with something that was given to us many years ago recently or where are we now? And how is, how is that cycle playing right now?
So generally, I don't know when the last housing rehab grant or economic, well, they, you're just doing economic development now. And I don't know if any of those were grants, but how's, I assuming housing rehab goes back years. So this could be twenty, thirty years worth of, you know, repayments coming in. Yeah, generally. And so it's just accumulating.
I I believe we've been, when houses sell and then we have to release the lien on those homes or whatever after a certain period of time. I believe it was, I think we're like year seventeen since we did an actual housing rehab program. So it's, it's been quite a, quite a while ago, but occasionally they'll come across my desk. I have to sign them to to release a lien.
Right. Yeah. So and then this, in this round, we, the city can apply for three different grants total, two competitive or two competitive and an, or two OTC and one competitive. So there's three. But can't exceed three point six million for the all three grants. And within those, there's limits within each type of grant you, there's funding limits. As Dustin said, there's possibly doing a storm, storm drain master planning grant. And that would be working with the city engineer's PACE. Great Northern would be essentially doing the project administration for that, the grant administration. We'd be helping out PACE as well. And then today, I understand that PACE came up and is possibly doing a NEPA, so the National Environmental Protection Act. It's also environmental assessment for Mossbury Springs project. So it's up to the city and the citizens, what takes priority, either the storm drain project or the the NEPA project for N Plan, which came in, that was pretty whopping, their their quote today. So we can do, we can do both of them. It's, it's the matter of time. We have, there's also a funding round coming out in January of 2025. This, the the open of this grant is in the end of July 2024, and we have to submit by the end of August. And then the, the second grant we're planning on submitting is the Housing Rehabilitation Grant, which offers funds to low and income, low and moderate income individuals or households to fix up their homes. And this is going to be paired with a code enforcement.
Could you expand on that a little bit more?
Before we do that, though, since the CBDG and the housing rehab slash code enforcement grants are two separate items, should we be discussing those? Two separate public hearings?
So you should have, so my recommendation with these, because CDBG public hearings are suit, like, not super cut and dry. You don't have to necessarily do that, but they are itemized as two separate public hearings. So the first public hearing should be general ideas for the money. But I think just to educate the general public before we do that, I think you could dive into the item of housing. So we would basically have a public hearing on collecting ideas. And then we would have a public hearing on the housing rehab, storm drain and code enforcement ideas.
Okay. So, all right, I just wanted before you. What was, so why don't you have our, we elaborate a little bit just so that way when we go to the public comments of this hearing, people can know a little bit about it and then we'll really treat it as a separate item.
So just in general, I would just say to the people out there that are looking in the low to medium income people, what would you want them to know about what the opportunity is, just in general with these funds? What could they ask for? How does it work?
Generally, so I haven't looked at the city's guidelines yet. I'm assuming we'll probably have to redo the guidelines. It's anything from remodeling a bathroom, remodeling a kitchen, maybe for elderly, putting in grab bars in bathrooms, remodeling bathrooms. If the, that needs to be done, replacing roofs, painting the outside, replacing siding. Some jurisdictions replace mobile homes if the mobile homes are past their prime and really need to repay, be replaced, those can, and they're generally not in mobile home parks. So that's if they're on an independent lot, we can replace them with manufactured homes on a foundation. So that sort of thing. It can be, like I said, as simple as, you know, replacing flooring and remodeling a bathroom all the way to pretty much remodeling your, the whole house because it needs. It can be a loan, it can be a forgivable loan, or it can be a grant. So it's outlined in the guidelines and it just depends how that's, how that's done. And there, there's an application process with it. And they're low interest rate loans. They're usually zero to one percent, zero to three percent, depending upon
Thank you.
income level.
And going back to your original question, Councilmember Deutsch, about repayment and why it's taken so long to get a hundred thousand dollars. That's kind of the main reason why is that these loans are at very low interest rate. So when people repay them, the city is not really making that much income from that.
Right. Yeah. And if you don't have a lot of loans, you're not getting a lot back unless you're selling a house.
Thanks.
All right. Any other further questions from the council?
I think at this point, I just request a public hearing to receive ideas from the public before we go to the other items.
Sounds good. With that, I will, thank you very much. And then we'll probably have you up again for the second one. And then with that, I will open the public hearing for public comment. Same rules as general public comment, three minutes, thirty-second warning. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item can come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Banks Jones.
I'm still going over the rules and then we'll let you go. Can come up to the podium. We'll do the people in first, in present first, and then we'll go to Zoom. And then if there's anyone who wants to go, who didn't have a chance to go in the first place, we'll let them go. And with that, I will open it up for public comment.
Hi, my name is, my name is Cheryl Banks Jones, and I do have a question in regard to some of the back, you know, like the grants that the sidewalks were going to be done by 2019 or something. I have an issue with that because it's 2024 and I think that was budgeted many years ago. And also, we as seniors, can we get a grant just to pay for the code enforcement that we have to pay for the higher rates? Can I get a clap? Maybe, you know, we need grants as seniors to be able to pay what you charge us on rinky-dink things. We need a loan for that, not beautification. We need one to pay code enforcement that has tagged us so much. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian Wilson. Who's responsible for handling the finances of the, of the loan, the repayment is the city? Is the city, does the city do that, or is there another firm that handles that? Because I think we got in trouble before uh for handling the loans by our, our finance director. Because he worked with Great Northern, Keith Anderson. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, that it's being handled or how it's being handled. That'd be my question.
Thank you.
Still Peter Artz, same address. I, I fall back on my earlier comments, which is the city of Dunsmere has to move to be a professional government entity. You have to have the vision, the planning, the budgeting, and the execution. Instead of serendipitously, uh, how important is veterans housing? How important is low income housing? How important is the library? What are we going to do about our neglected park facilities on and on? I would expect the city, as it puts out its two-year budget for fiscal year 24, 26, to have the priorities listed. Is Hedge Creek Falls a priority or not? If it is, is it one or five or 10? All of this leads to, as far as I know, none of you are grant writers. As far as I know, the city has no capability to write grants. That's crazy. There is money available for veteran housing at the state level. Millions of dollars waiting to rehabilitate housing for veterans, whether they're disabled, low income, or moderate income. But because this city can't take the first step, it hasn't happened since I moved here sixteen years ago. More to the point, we don't have a functional loan committee. More to the point, uh, we have a very spotty record in fiscal management. As long as you're stuck in those tracks, this will be an enduring disappointing conversation. Thank you.
Boy Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. I've read the, what was online on this agreement. My understanding is that these guys are going to take over, help us out. If we don't get the grant, we pay them for their services and go on. That's the gist of it. The thing I'm looking at in here was one small part that I'm knowledgeable of. And it discusses in this lead-based paint, and abatement is a term used. I read the definition, and I'm not quite sure that it meets the total definition. Abatement, it tends to agree in here. Abatement is after a child or somebody has tested positive for that poisoning. That is different than removal of that. When I took the classes and became the highest person, one of the guy got an A, got a perfect paper. I missed one as a lead-based paint supervisor. And in doing that, it was over and over again that people don't understand the term abatement. The term abatement is after somebody's tested positive. You need to reduce that. And in doing that, when they made the, the current laws that we go by, legislators wanted to see something come about. It took them years and years to come up with the levels of how much lead was acceptable inside a window sill, how much lead was accepted outside of it. The fact is, it is nice to take care of the lead in an appropriate way, but it does not mean that there are funds available for each and every case within that. One of the reasons that Reading offered this class several years ago was there was no lead-based paint supervisors north of, uh, north of Marysville. And the workers were there, there was nothing in the Reading area. They thought by training some of the local people, they would get that. I worked for a state institution, there was no need for me to go on and get the health department certification for that. But I want people to know that removing lead is a very important thing. It says under seven, a child under six, and women retain fifty percent of the lead they take in. Men working in the field only take in and maintain about thirty percent. That is why you will see a lot of things written that would talk about children under six and women. Because quite frankly, they're the ones that get the toxicity when a man goes out and starts grinding paint inappropriate. But it's also, we have to do reason in removing this paint. So this is a definition error, I feel. It is pointed out, and the words rereading it, if you read it, it says may be used after, it's not always available.
Thank you.
Andrea Hurr, 4740 Simpson Avenue. I'm actually, now, there's going to be another hearing, right, for the public regarding the community development block grants? So I would definitely like to do a lot more research on this. But to me, the idea that there are resources available for low income and moderate families, to families and seniors, veterans, to improve their housing is, it sounds, I mean, very, very good. And I know when I worked in the Resource Center in Bleed, you know, the program was being offered there. It has, it has history, so I'll, I'll try to do more research, because I, I don't know a lot about it. I also know that when we started the brewery, um, we got a community development block grant. And uh, you know, I think it, it helped us to establish the brewery, make it possible. And the brewery, over the years, has brought a lot of business, a lot of benefits to the community. So I would speak in favor of, of this.
Thank you.
Debbie Spagnolo, again, when I was in Washington last week with, at my son, she lives in, I think you say it, Poolsville. They have a, I took pictures that I wanted to show you guys, because when you guys were talking about the trails, there's certain areas that build these housing tracks, and they've got these enormous homes. And the old people live over here, and the young people live over here, and they got playgrounds and all that. But they have trails walking there, and they have signs. And it says, I, I have a picture of it, like, don't disturb the natural people. And then, and they are going to keep that part green. So it's like, it's this big housing community, and then they have trails to walk around. And it's pretty nice, you know, it's, is that what they're going to try and do here? Is that what, is the plan is, is to make trails like that to walk on? Or is it just, just for, I mean, or to the, or to the Mossbury or whatever? Because if, if that can be a seller, that's pretty nice. I mean, what Dunsmere is around, we like it here. It's like, you could bring the new, you could bring the technology, but you don't have to take away a land that are souls. I mean, it's, you know, it's cool. And those trails that they have are really neat, because they're fenced off and they're taken care of, and have little signs and little things about the birds and the trees and all that. So it's just something to think about. I don't know where they're going to do it in town, and what they're, where they're planning on doing it, so, just something to think about.
Thank you. And anyone else in person? Seeing none, I'll open it up on Zoom. If you do have something you'd like to say, please uh signaled you would like to do so by going down to the reaction tab and raising your hand. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. And then close the public hearing for item number eight.
So I would just suggest moving on to item, uh, the next item.
So with that, we'll move on to item number B. All right, um, which is discussion of entering into a subrecipient agreement with Great Northern Services for two grant programs, housing rehabilitation slash code enforcement, and storm drain planning. All right, Mayor and Council, so one of the challenges we have is housing. It's come up numerous times through the housing element and all of those things. And this would, uh, we're kind of right in line with developing this, uh, right as we just pre- recently adopted the housing element. So um, staff felt it was appropriate to kind of go after um housing rehabilitation as one of those aspects through CDBG. And with that, uh, we've mentioned before the amount of vacant properties that we have. And that's where the code enforcement component comes in, is trying to address vacant properties that could be converted, you know, back into usable housing or into uh making them available. And uh, so that's those two aspects, and then storm drain planning. So um, one thing that uh we have not done is adopt a storm drain plan. And that would get us better access to additional funding. Some of our storm drains are in excess of a hundred years, and we're starting to see failures that we have no funding mechanisms for. So with a storm drain plan, that we would have the opportunity to be able to identify the highest needs of the community, and then uh be able to hopefully get some funding for those in the future.
So would it be able to do both planning and actually doing some repairs, or is it basically?
So this is a, just an initial kind of plan, like we've done in the past. We've done plans for like our streets, so we kind of prioritize the streets and how, you know, their, their conditions and those kind of things. This is, this would go through, and it would do, um, we would uh go and inspect everything. We would map it, and we would identify um the ownership of it, whether it's ours or the counties or Caltrans. And then be able to uh, you know, prioritize those, much as we did in the active transportation plan, kind of identify the, the, the high priority projects, and then be able to uh move forward with some funding for that.
So just, sorry, uh, so the next steps, if we did dedicate funding to this, we'd probably go out to RFP for a professional to do this plan? Are you anticipating Pace to do this?
Probably Pace to do the stormwater plan, um, because they maintain all of our GIS, and that's a component of what we're trying to do. Uh, but we, I'm open to doing an RFP as well.
Okay, I, I just, one of the things that I, I, well, I'll wait for discussion. I have no questions.
Raise a question, are we still getting um GIS layers built from pace? So that each of the different systems we're talking about has its own layer?
Yes, they do maintain those layers. So we, we utilize that on a regular basis um for, like, even our upcoming uh project for uh the sewer collection that will start next spring. That, that will have all updated GIS as a part of that with the asphalt.
Let's have a quick question regarding the number of grants. It was mentioned that there were three total grants, but uh the subrecipient agreement is for two. I just got some clarification on the topic.
So I'll make a couple of clarifications. For this round of funding, for this round of notice of funding availability, jurisdictions can apply for three, three grants, three different types of grants. We um had decided to go for two, and then we were originally going to go for three, and then the Mossbury Springs was dropped because of other funding availability. So it was just going to be two. And I am now currently limited on my time, because I work with other jurisdictions as well. And I have quite a number of them to do in 2024. And like I said, 2025 is coming out, and that will be out in January, so we can, we can always plan for that. Also, with the planning grant, um, that, the, once the planning grant is finished, um, and that grant is closed out, you have five years to implement that grant. It doesn't necessarily need to be through CDBG, but it does need to be implemented. If it's not implemented, then you will have to refund those funds to the state. So just keep that in mind, um, when we do do that planning grant. So um, I know Pace was also thinking about doing NEPA at the same time as that, and that would be procured. So if Pace is not, then we would have to procure the, the firm to do the storm drain, and then procure the firm to also do the NEPA, because we would want a complete package. Or unless you want to do NEPA on a separate, you know, you don't have to do it through the planning grant. And we have a maximum of three hundred thousand, so. Which is not, which is frankly not a lot to do a planning grant. You're doing a big planning grant.
Estimate on how much Pace would charge for it?
Uh, right now, we have it within the grant document to be two hundred and fifty thousand. We have the NEPA CEQA contractor, which they sub within plan, and that's to cover about thirty-five thousand. So the NEPA CEQA uh amount that's currently allocated would probably be low for that type of document, which is, I think, where Brandy's coming in. That NEPA itself is its own animal, and that may require additional city funding on the backend or other types of funding mechanisms. But right now, we have it within the grant as two hundred and fifty thousand for that planning grant to go to the city engineer.
Yeah, I didn't think this fund would be able to handle the whole thing, would it, for the planning grant?
Yeah, it, it really depends how big it is. They, um, the, the grant funds for this round for public, for infrastructure projects is three point three million. So, you know, that sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot. It's not a lot of money when you start getting into really big public infrastructure projects.
All right, any other further questions? Thank you.
Oh, and we do have handouts, and if anybody wants to talk to me, I do have my card, so. And I can get those to you if you'd like them. Thank you.
All right, with that, I will open up this item to public comment. Same rules as the last public comment, three minutes, thirty second warning. Uh, and I'll open it up to people in the room first.
I hope someday when we say "we," we get to know who the "we" is. It really hurts, okay? Well, who do you, who you, you are employed and you represent Great Northern? So Great Northern has decided it. You decided it. Anyway, let me, let me move on to more impressive things. That, that five-year to implement is a real big scare to me. I mean, I, I already know that with every grant, there's some great costs. The, the problem is, our, our stormwater system's terrible, and I've, I've talked about it for fifteen years. It first came up with uh our council, and then it started happening when we had blowouts up there, and then blowouts over here. And then, and it does need to be looked at and addressed. Right now, it's a city of twelve hundred dwellings, seventeen hundred people. You're doing uh sewer and water, you're doing a sewer rate study for increase, and you're doing a solid waste increase, it's going to be pretty significant. And I'd say, boy, you should look at this very closely, council, because it may be one we want to pass on and see if it might be just a little bit cheaper to do some more work and get us through a couple more years.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. And, yep.
I move to enter into two subrecipient agreements with Great Northern Services and make a not-to-exceed-budget adjustment of five thousand dollars to general fund in case the grant is or are not awarded.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? This needs to be a roll call, roll call. All right, Wendy?
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Aye.
And Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Not sure. I'd like to study it a little bit. Can I do that?
There's a motion on the table.
This is routine. I would say no.
Mayor Cleno?
Aye. All right, um, where are we? For that, we'll move on to item number ten, old business, operate city manager, enter into interim building services agreement. Uh, Mayor and Council, um, based on the last meeting, I have uh brought this forward to give me the ability to continue with services uh for our building department. And uh, I have not identified one yet, um, had a couple of conversations, but nothing in stone. And so I'm just asking for the permission to enter into an interim building inspection services as uh, before we bring forward the RFP, because there's going to be a gap in time where uh we would not have services before the RFP is processed as complete. Any questions? All right, seeing none, I will open this for public comment. Same rules as before, three minutes, thirty second warning. Please state your name and address for the record, and also please limit any public comment to this particular item. All right.
I, I hope for the record, uh, you can open up. I, I hope for the record, you can open up the contract and it won't entertain anyone that's. Past held the job. Is that for sure?
I have not been communicating with anybody who has.
Do back and forth right now, but we can get there once we answer, once we get to our discussion, we can answer that, so.
You opened it for comment. I don't understand.
But.
I'm, I'm asking a question.
Yes, and when it's our, during discussion, we can answer that question, but we can't take away your time. Which is why I paused your time now. So if you have more to say. Yeah. Alright, any other further public comment?
I'm, I recognize we're not supposed to ask questions, but I, I guess I'm not clear on what you had just said. You're. This was in response to. The building inspector, is that correct?
I'm saying I'm going to pause your time here while I make clarification. So just so you know, I paused your time right now for your public comment. So the way this works is that we can't, if you ask a question, we can't, if we respond to that, we are technically interrupting your time. So therefore you can ask us questions and then when it comes time for council discussion. If one of us chooses to or the city manager chooses to, we can then answer that, any questions that come up during public comment at that time. So you're more than welcome to ask questions. We just can't answer until we get into council discussion and with that I will.
I don't think he understands that what we're trying to do is hire another building inspector.
Perfect.
So with that, I will restart, with that I'll restart your time.
Dave answered it. It's just, thank you. And I didn't give you my name, Mark Wares. Thank you so much. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comments this evening on this item?
White Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. Empire, this gentleman is an extremely important person even for the next 60 days while this contract terminates itself. I understand that. I heard a councilman said, we are going to do it. That's not what it says here. That's not what you're doing. You're given the power to this gentleman to hire a man interim. I think this is something that needs to be brought back to the board when that person is found. I think it's a decision that needs to be made. I think that's what the people spoke to. I think they would like you more involved with that decision.
Thank you. Any other further public comment on this item tonight? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item and open it for council discussion.
So. Okay, so I'm reading this and I'm understanding that we can't just terminate. We have to do the 60 days. That was supposed to be a question that was answered, supposed to be brought to us from you and John Kenny at this meeting. So my question is, can we not terminate?
That is a discussion I haven't had with, with Mr. Kenny yet.
You guys are supposed to have that conversation and bring him back to us tonight. We should just terminate the contract. I don't have to worry about 60 days in the end.
But I, I also have to provide services, councilmember Kaiser. And, and, and so I still have to provide those services till I have somebody on board. And so I'm working to get somebody on board. I just received at like four o'clock this afternoon, I received information from John Kenny, but I have not been able to communicate with him yet on that. And I plan on having that discussion with him tomorrow because there is some room for discussion between him and I, but I also have to ensure that we have services when people come through the front door. And so I'm, I'm. I will have those conversations. I can send you an email with an update on that if that's okay. But I, I just, I, right now I'm in the middle of two other RFPs and for me to tackle another RFP before those two are completed. We don't have enough capacity. So we're probably about four to five months before I have a permanent building inspector in place. So I'm going to have a gap. And I'm trying to fill that gap and I understand the council wants to change building inspectors. So it's only been four days essentially since we had the last meeting and so. We're, we're working on it. It's, it takes time to get meetings set up.
To the mayor?
Yes.
So backing this up because I was not here last time and I was not part of that decision, but let me just clarify something with the contract. So within your contract with the current building inspector, there is a 60 day termination timeframe. So you have effectively, from my understanding from your last vote Thursday, you have voted as a 4-0 majority to terminate the contract. So that is not negated. But when you go to terminate the contract. Mr. McIntyre stays on for at least 60 days while we go to a new interim service. Now you could find a new interim service before those 60 days, you could find an interim service after those 60 days, but he is at least on contract and he has guaranteed pay. For those 60 days. So that's part of that contract. Now John Kenny can weigh in on that as much as he wants, but that's my understanding of your contract. So what Mr. Reef and my understanding of this item is when discussing it with the mayor briefly is that. You are not going to be able to hire a permanent building inspector in 60 days and from a professional standpoint, you're not going to do that. So what it's basically stating is city manager reef is asking your permission that if we hit that 16 day mark with Mr. McIntyre. He can enter into an interim. Now he can enter it into it earlier if we're able to find someone and Mr. McIntyre would like to forego the other 60 days. But from contract law standpoint, you have to pay him out to the 60 days if he so chooses. So that's part of that contract. Now again, getting someone new coming in, you could have someone sooner. And he may be okay with that. I can't speak for him or anyone else, but basically that's what the item is at hand. And so my understanding, city manager, if you're not recommending an interim contract to continue, Mr. McIntyre.
That's correct.
But it's just to get someone new.
For a substitute.
Until we can get a permanent contract. Yes, correct.
In 60 days.
In 60 days, unless you find someone sooner and he agrees to forego the rest of his 60 day payment.
Well, the question I have there then is. If we wanted to, if we felt it was necessary, couldn't we continue to pay him if we have to pay him, but at the same time get somebody in that could move people along?
If I, if I may, my understanding from your previous conversation last week is you're not happy with his performance, correct? Okay, so if for example, there is no option for an interim after 60 days and Mr. McIntyre is your only option. Most likely city manager reef would bring that item back to us prior to the 60 day and go, look, we can't find any, anyone interim. Mr. McIntyre has either agreed or not agreed to stay on after the 60 days and we can make a decision then. But per California law, you have to have a building inspector available. So we have to have that. So I don't think we'll end up in that circumstance because there's a number of different firms that can provide building inspecting services. And that's basically what's being requested of the city council tonight is the flexibility of the city manager to be able to enter that interim contract. Because the likelihood of you getting a permanent new contract is non-existent. We already did, yeah.
Did, I'm on a roll. Motion to appoint and there is no name.
Well, it's a motion to authorize the city manager.
A substitute. My motion is we're going to appoint a substitute to the justice.
Oh, you're on the appointment.
Page 56.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, we give the city manager the authority to appoint an interim. Building inspector until we can find a permanent building inspector at that time and will be brought to council.
What do you want brought to council?
The, the new guy, the permanent guy.
Okay, yes, you have to do that. Yes. So you don't have to put that in your motion, but that has to come back to you anyway.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Motion passes. Actually, that probably should have been a roll call because it will probably call it.
No, I, I, I mean, it's either one, it does not involve the budgetary.
It'll still, because we're starting a new fiscal year, it'll be within budget.
Okay.
And in the event that we, I, it gets close to budget, I would come back for an amendment.
Okay. Alright, with that, we will move on to item number 11, new business. Item A, review of applications for city appointed Dunsmere Recreation and Park District Board vacancies. Well, we were, we're, I'm going to get there. So just so everyone knows, the three people who we had apply to be on the parks and board are all either employees. Or volunteer, I believe it's at the elementary school and it is graduation there tonight. So they were all requested to help out there since we would like to all hear their feedback of why they would like to be on the board, what they plan on doing and ask them questions. Since we can't do that tonight, our intent is to table this item. I would like to still allow anyone who came tonight. To do public comment, the ability to public comment before we table it. So I'm going to run through. The normal process until we get to discussion and then I will be motioning that we table this item.
The request from the Park and Rec District. Was to have it table till the 20th meeting.
Yeah, true. Okay. But like I said, there may still be someone wants to public comment. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. I know I don't have any right now just because I'm going to save my questions for the 20th meeting. Does anyone have any questions before we open up to public comment? Alright, seeing no questions, I will open up this item for public comment. And same rules as before.
Yeah, this pack now, East Street and under, did you say there were three people that used to work here and now they're at the school something tonight? I applied for that, those jobs. That means there was four applicants. Nobody got my application. It says right here, three. It says three vacancies, three applicants, and you just said that these applicants are at the school thing. So you guys didn't get my application. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comment on this item tonight? Anyone in public? Anyone on Zoom? Alright, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. With that, since the, those three are not here, I move that we table this item until the 20th.
June 20th.
June 20th.
Well, the one thing is, is if there is an application that wasn't seen, I'd like to make sure it's looked at, we've looked at the next time.
I'll follow up on that. Okay.
Alright, with that, it has been moved and seconded. We table it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item tabled. Alright, and with that, we will move on to item number B, California Arts in the Parks Grant Partnership.
Alright, Mayor and Council. I had the, this grant came across to my email and I reached out to Siskiyou County Arts Council to consider applying. I met with Patricia Lord this last week with myself and. Steven and to kind of develop a thought process behind this. And so one of the areas that we, we really felt that would, would benefit from, from a grant towards the arts is, is kind of. Bringing new vibrant something that will go through a process in the community center and ball diamond area. And so what this grant is do next week and. I would like to enter into a grant partnership or a support with. With the Siskiyou County Arts Council so we can submit that application and then. It would basically start a planning process. This is a planning grant. So it'd be a planning process similar to like ATP or something like that. And so, but our grant will be focused on the kind of the entrance corridor to the Dunsmere City Park and Botanical Gardens.
Alright, any questions? Alright, seeing none, I will open up this item for public comment. Same rules as before, three minutes, seeing no one and no one on Zoom, I will close public comment on this item.
Motion to authorize the city manager to sign the partnership letter with the Siskiyou County Arts Council.
I'll second. Alright, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Alright, and with that, we'll move on to item number C, downtown wifi and landing page discussion.
May I request a five minute recess through the chair?
Yes, we will go into a five minute recess and re-adjourn at 7:32. Back, I will bring this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council back into order at 7:37. Alright, and with that, we'll move on to item number, or letter. C, downtown wifi and landing page discussion. City manager reef, if you'd like to lead us off.
Alright, Mayor and Council, so about a year ago, we entered into an agreement to have downtown wifi. It is now active and as council member. Deutsch has brought up, he's, this is his item and so. You know, he, he's brought up the opportunities and I kind of like to pass it on to him on what his ideas are.
Thank you, Mr. Reef and Mr. Mayor. So what we're looking at here is that our, our goal with this, working with Mr. Brian. Was to provide people who come into the town and of course, people who live here too. The opportunity on one hand to be able to get cell service, not cell service, but get to the internet. Beyond that though, the idea is once they do that, once they log into our hotspot. We want them to be able to get all kinds of reasons to stay, to be able to look at what events are going on. Information about restaurants, all those kinds of things. And so the idea then would be to have a landing page where people would have a QR code and would be on menus around the city, would be in buildings around the city. And it would be generally the idea that when somebody visits us and goes to whatever, they have a reason to say, oh, if I get to this QR code, if I get to this landing page. Not only do I have availability to the internet, which otherwise wouldn't have because of the poor cell service. But at the same time, they have a way to continue to want to stay here to spend money. I've talked with Discover Siskiyou and Discover Siskiyou would be interested in doing the management of a landing page. I think one of the big opportunities of that would be the chance to actually make back enough money to pay for this regular pay. So by putting advertising as part of it. So however we're doing it, the basic idea would be to get a QR code for a landing page. Find a way to promote that every way we can so that when people come here, they know, get onto that landing page. And then the second part of all of that is how do we fill that with all the information? At the building Dunsmere's future event, we came up with four different action teams and one of those was really aimed at. Information and getting information out. And so their passion that they want to go forward with. And it's been kind of led by Sean Garland, who was the leader of that particular group. Is to find a way to collect all the information in the city and get it available to the people. This would be the place where that could happen. And so the idea would be, there would be a team of people working on developing tours and itineraries and. Coming up with one place where all the events would go to so everyone can get their events in there. And so that's kind of what I'm looking at going forward is working with Discover Siskiyou to kind of manage that and then having a team that also works as part of this to connect up with all the business and everything else that goes on. So that's kind of the vision that we've worked on. Would you agree, Matthew?
Yes.
Yeah, and I believe my question here, as we go to council questions is, you know, as far as I'm, the point of this item is really for us and the public to provide input on. What they would like to see on this landing page, correct? Or what they would like to direct.
No, right now it would be simply to come up with a landing page, to come up with an HTML URL link that we could turn into a QR code. And then that would go out for anybody that wants to log in. Beyond that, you're right, we could, we could ask the questions, what we want to put up. But for right now, it's just the idea of making that fundamental connection of coming up with, moving it for right now, because I know if you don't know, you could just get on and log on to it right now. But what we want to do is have them sign on and once they do, if nothing else, we would have a calendar of their events that are coming down at restaurants, but that would be built out over time. So it could be part of that, but fundamentally right now, it's just the idea, let's get a URL, get QR codes, start getting those out there and then have a page that we can start building on. So I mean, that's more than anything else right now. Get QR codes, start getting those out there and then have a page that we can start building on. So I mean, that's more than anything else right now. We can come back and get more what we put up there, but that would be, I think, a second step. Makes sense?
Sounds good. Any other council questions?
I love the idea of uh Discover Siskiyou advertising on it. It makes sense.
Yeah.
And I guess I'll point out another past, price grant, a former council member. Or Pusher has been more than happy to help us with smaller projects, you know, like this maybe, it's something to be able to do at a favorable rate.
It could be too, yeah, certainly. I would look either way.
Alright, unless there's any further council questions, I will open up this item for public comment. Alright, same rules as regular public comment, three minutes, thirty seconds. Please state your name.
I'm here still, um my business handle, I have. Business tenants in historic district, and I get to find this one, this project. And the two most repeated criticisms are as follows. Number one, the link is not secure. So for instance, the Dunsmere Community Resource Center, dealing with client information. The link is of more use to them than people who wanna access services, the resource center. The other is, another bill of new, a live conduct of this experiment, the upload and download speeds are so slow. As to render the link useless. Though almost all the businesses I met with didn't have their own secure websites. But the city was urging me to involve, putting light facilities on my building. I checked with former mayor Bryce Gray, the owner of Pusher, one of my businesses, a tech business. And he is totally against the project. He does not understand the purpose that it is to serve. And how it's going to serve whatever ends your after. So I would simply urge whoever loves this project. To work with this discrepancy so that it actually serves their needs. And the notion that taxpayers are paying for this, um she really have a right to.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Thank you. Alright, any additional public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment this evening.
The first thing I'd like to make very clear, this was never intended for the use of the businesses. This was not intended for them to be able to do their business on it. It is intended for tourists. Who come to the downtown and have no cell service. They can't get to the internet in any manner, shape or form because they have no cell service. That's what this is for. And it was designed only to be used specifically along Dunsmere Avenue and Sacramento Avenue. It was not designed to be able to be used outside of it. It was never expected. The most important thing to be very clear about is each of these signals, each of these connections will be secure. It's not logging on to a main thing. It's a secure network so that each person who picks up their phone and logs on to it is on a secure line. So the whole point of this is to keep people in Dunsmere spending money. And if the businesses don't want people to stay in Dunsmere spending money, I'd like to hear those folks talking because this is what this is all about. Cell service unavailable in Dunsmere, people can't find out about why they wanna stay around. I just wanna make that very clear. And that's why we're spending it is to increase revenue into our businesses who sell things and sell. That's all. Thanks.
I have a question on here based off of the whole um business thing. Um, I just want to clarify. From my understanding, as part of this project was also putting several fiber connection points that building, that businesses could. Connect to through hardwired fiber, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, so that's not part of the downtown Wi-Fi, but it is part of the project.
Yes, the buildings that have the Wi-Fi on them, which this is, this is one. We actually have two connections on this building. Um so now we provide fiber internet specifically here as a backup for the sheriff's department and, and for um. For the uh fire department and as well as the other buildings in downtown that have them. They did get fiber direct to their building.
Through the chain. The surrounding buildings could potentially tap into that in the future.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a lot cheaper for them to connect.
I did wanna just tie that in is that while the actual public, my understanding is while the public Wi-Fi isn't for use for the businesses, they do have that.
And the lead.
And as, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, through, through the chair really quick, um I would like to say, Councilmember Deutsch, um I have had several visitors actually say they like that there is free. Downtown Wi-Fi, so um there are people who do appreciate it. Um I will say, uh I have received some of the same questions about the connection speed. And so maybe there, one of the things I was gonna suggest with the landing page is that um having something on there that if people are. Having issues with it, like if there are speed or connection issues, if we could have a contact where they could either put in a ticket with five or at least letting them know. Cause maybe it's a certain area of town that's having issues with, you know, the Wi-Fi bouncing off of any of the other buildings or materials. And so it could just be a, a, a network connection issue. I mean, that's the downfall of Wi-Fi is that it is personability in terms of like the type of materials it comes into contact with. It's not as fast as say a direct upload. Um but I have heard nice things. Um but I do, I, I do want to also just put in my two cents. Um I think tapping into Discover Siskiyou as uh someone to assist us with it is a really good idea. I think it's a way that we could advertise events within the city. As well as in the surrounding area. So as we know with the McLeod Mushroom Festival, there were a lot of people in town in McLeod for that, but we got a lot of that overflow. And so I think having a lot of complimentary items on that is really smart, so.
So one, one thing to note that I don't know if anybody's spent any time up at the ball field, but I can tell you there's a significant difference there.
It's really nice.
From what it used to be, you couldn't even call out. So staff uses it quite often be, when we have our phones all connected. So when we do move from area to area, I can tell you that that area is a significant improvement.
That'll definitely come in handy in the weekend, not, not this weekend, but.
Next weekend.
Yeah.
So.
I'd just like to remind people that tourists are definitely an important part of why we did it, but there was also an education component to it. Uh coming out of COVID, you know, being online, uh for your education is more important than ever for our high schoolers, even uh elementary school children. So the, the thought of having ubiquitous uh Wi-Fi in spaces where they didn't have it, that just seemed like a really good idea. Also, as part of that contract, we were negotiating uh fiber lines directly to city locations and our comparable speeds. All wrapped up into one bill. So we actually, essentially half of the value of the contract really is just going to serving us at our current levels.
I, I would like to also compliment uh council or Vice Mayor Bryant for having worked that all out. He really pressed for that and was able to get some really good terms. So thank you for that.
So. I have a couple of things I'd like to say on, on this. One is to address a couple pieces of public comment and a lot of the other is just to say where I'd like to see this going. Uh which I believe is the main point of the item. Um so number one is I have actually used it a couple times. Um there's a couple spots in town where I don't get cellphone service on Verizon. Um one is at the brewery. And I have, for those of you who know me, if someone asks a question, I have to go on to Wikipedia or whatever and find the answer if I don't know it. Um and I have used it for that. And I would just like to address, you know, network security for a minute. Whenever anyone is on any kind of public Wi-Fi, whether that's a hotel, our downtown Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi at McDonald's, whatever it is. At a big stadium, you really should not be doing any kind of financial or personal.
Yeah.
Security business on anything that is not a trusted Wi-Fi, which is either, you know, work or home. Um. Anything that is public or that members of the, you know, public have access to, try not to be putting, try not to be buying things on it. Try not to be putting your social security number into some form on, on that. Um just because other members of the public. And it takes someone with an amazing amount of skill to be able to intercept, you know, and decrypt these communications. But it is just a very, very good, I, or you know, idea never to be doing anything too private on a public network. Um. And with that, in terms of where we'd like to go, I would like to see um QR codes or little posters or whatever it is spread around town. Um and I would love to see the landing page evolve into something that has, that points people towards local businesses and towards local events and towards local things to do. Um I know right now there isn't public Wi-Fi up at Hedge Creek. I know that was one spot that wasn't included. Um I know there is parking it. I'm not sure if the public Wi-Fi reaches to where people are barking in Moss Brae, but along that fence. On those really busy days where people going to Moss Brae are parking all the way down to Yak's, we should have something along that fence. That people couldn't, oh, Wi-Fi connect to and oh, there's downtown, I can see restaurants. And starting to kind of get moving in towards that direction. Um. Uh with that, I'd love to see a few QR codes up at Hedge Creek or um Moss Brae that it. Direct people also, you know, that are along the similar lines that direct people towards, towards the downtown um and what's available. So with that, I, I would really just, right, if we don't do anything with this, it's, it's gonna be wasting money. Um but if we really capitalize on it, it has a potential to be great for the town, so.
The council's okay with it, I would propose that uh I'll take this on as an action item with my technical background and work with Discover Siskiyou and bring it back. Work with also with Dustin to uh bring it back, but come up with some motion on this and, and see where we can go.
Okay, and maybe uh try to come up with a test QR code, bring it to the next meeting.
Well, what I'll do then is I'll check with five, because that's where we'll get a URL and I'll check and get a QR code and then we can start working about getting it around. That's at the, at least the initial step right there.
Yeah, actually, when it did trigger that in my head, I, I do receive a, a monthly report. And it, it kinda, sometimes it gets, it goes to this filter. And so it gets stuck in a folder. I did look at it uh. Um for the last, so we started January zero and then it just slowly increased. I think. The last one was like April with five hundred and sixty-three users in the month. And so we're just seeing a steady incline. Um and so I. Haven't seen the most recent one from the end of May, but uh.
So I just have a question um for the two council members who kind of took this on and the city manager. Um where do you see, what number of users in a month would you see during a summer month? Or maybe as a kind of a target for next year or the year following, what number do you see as a success? And as a really good, you know, outstanding success as, how many people would you like to see on, do you have any? An idea or any kind of target? And maybe if you do, if no one does.
If you're asking how many people I like to see in the downtown, stay long out there. If, if, if the baseline is five hundred. I actually think that's quite a good place to start. If barely in the summer season, we already have five hundred people here without any advertising for it. Cause you don't know it exists unless it's someone tells you or you're desperate and you look for it to see if it'll work. So I, I can see a world where we have signs, QR codes, saying that you have free Wi-Fi or check out what's going on in town, you know?
Yep.
I think that that landing page, cause I happen to, there's some places in town I don't have good service, others. Places I have great service, but if I were in town as a tourist and there was a place to find out, I could just scan this and find out what's going on tonight, tomorrow, the next day. That landing page metric is something I wanna track more carefully than moves specifically using the.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I, I think this month will kind of tell us, sign this month in August where we have events at the ball field. Um and that's, we'll probably see a, it uptick there as well as during the fall season with football games and stuff like that.
Cool, yeah.
Cool. Alright, um you wanna move to table then?
Yeah, motion to table.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh we'll move on to item number D, review of Dunsmere Municipal Code is pertaining to temporary banners within and outside of the historic district. And I think this was more of an informational item for today. So I'll hand it off to City Manager Reeve.
Yep, Mayor and Council, so this item came up at the twenty-third meeting. Um so it's kind of just more informational. There was a lot of questions around signs. Um you know, so there's the first page, page sixty-five of the agenda packet. And going into sixty-six is all the exemptions for signs that uh are allowed. Um and then uh on page sixty-seven, it talks about regulations applicable to particular zoning. Um areas and also temporary signs, because there was a discussion about that. So. Um it's more informational, so if you had any questions, you, uh it's in front of you and you could bring those back to us.
And so the way, one way I understand this too is that, there's a question here, is that outside of the historic district, a temporary banner for like an event. Doesn't need a permit, correct?
Oh, as I understand it, in and out.
I believe so.
I thought in still had its own, or there was regulations within the historic district and they wanted um take a look. Um it, it allows it inside windows, it's on the inside of the property owner, but like something that's along a fence or something like that may not be allowed. Um.
The only place downtown that would, that would even be close to that would be the uh fence of the community garden. The rest of it would be outside of the historic district. So that would be the only place theoretically where there would be a temporary banner.
Just the fence, um just above the cornet at the brewery.
Yes, that would, that is in the historic district, yes. The brewery is not, but the fence in the garden is in the historic district, yes. Okay, um does anyone have any questions before I open this up to public comment? Alright, um with that, I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item for tonight.
I would like to thank both uh City Manager and uh Wendy for pointing out this information to me. It was something I missed in the update and I'm glad to see it. Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, and with that, since this is information, um I'm going to, well, move us on to. Item number twelve, unless anybody has any more discussion on this item. Nope. Alright, with that, we'll move on to item number twelve, future agenda items.
There's two things uh I, I would like to ask council to bring back and discuss. What is Moss Brae Falls Trail? Take a look at that. There's some way we can work it, get it out of limbo. This is, this would be the greatest state. It does matter would have next to losing railroad and timber. Is a safe trail to the most beautiful, one of the iconic waterfall that's in our own backyard. So I, I, I'm encouraging council to agree with me that we should take a look at this. And then the second thing that I would like to bring back is, on here we've had for a minute, it's this plaque for Dale Faulkner City Park. The guy dedicated his life to give it died there, that I think that, that we owe it to him and his family. Okay, so those would be my two motions to, to bring back to uh future agenda.
Okay.
In the near future, in the next couple of meetings.
With Moss Brae, you know, the committee, but kind of from the outside still. Uh my understanding is we're going out to bid for engineering services.
We have not, no. So where we're at right now is looking for resources to be able to pay for that. So uh but I. So but we can agendize the item. I did talk to City Manager Reeve that we can come back with a status report. One of the things to note, though, if we do bring this back as an item, you have to take something else off the plate because this is a very large project, so.
This has already been on the plate, been a priority of this council for a long time. I was just, my understanding is we were going to go out to bid for engineering services. We couldn't get a good quote.
Yeah, I haven't been able to get a firm quote from Pace, so I will follow up with them before we bring it back.
But my main point was putting some action to it. If we need to take action regarding how we get to that point where we know the money we need to raise, because there's people that want to donate currently. And organizations, but we have to get through that engineering hurdle first.
So how about this, Dustin, you and I can discuss how best to put this on the agenda in a way that it'll help spur the most action or provide the most information to the council. And then we'll bring it back in one of the next couple of meetings, maybe not, maybe not on the twentieth, but maybe in that July or August meeting, yeah. Yeah, for sure. So you and I can discuss, discuss how we want to.
My my understanding, and we might want to look back at the minutes, was that I believe someone on the council had agreed to talk to his family to put together the verbiage for it and we were just going to get it printed. I don't think it needs, I think we did all agree on that on a previous item. So we can check the minutes on what was decided, but my understanding is we were just waiting for someone to talk to Dale and his family about verbiage.
I'll, if you guys don't mind, I'll work with Mike Rodriguez and we will make that happen. I can bring that back to the next.
Yeah, if you can just get information.
Yeah, they just did the memorial ceremony at the park last, I believe it was last weekend. So that just recently happened, so.
Okay, anybody have anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.